Meeting Board of September 24th. This is our sixth meeting of Fiscal 2016. My name is Emily Innes. I'm the Chair, and I will ask the other members to introduce themselves.
Alex Whiteside, I'm a member.
Michael Kelly, member.
Liam Clark, Planning Director.
Julia Getman, Clerk.
Tim Sirwinski, Assistant Town Planner.
Brian Fers, Member.
Cheryl Togias, Member.
Just to let you all know that this is being both recorded and broadcast live. So I'm going to run through today's agenda so everybody knows what's happening. Our next meeting's dates are October 8th, October 22nd, and October 26th. That is the Night of Town Meeting. We will be discussing the approval of past minutes. Next on the agenda is Citizens Speak. Under New Business, we have an informational presentation for 591 Blue Hill Avenue, and an Approval Not Required Application for 106 Hillside Street. Our public hearing for the Thayer Nursery Special Permit and Site Plan Approval will begin at 7:15. This is continued from September 10th. Under Old Businesses, we have the zoning articles for October 2015, and for the May-October 2016 town meetings, and a discussion of the Master Plan Implementation Committee members, the process for appointing them. At the moment, I'm going to ask that we hold off on approval of the past minutes so we can move directly to Citizens Speak. For Citizens Speak, I'll recognize people from the audience who want to speak. If you come forward, sit in the chair and give your name and address into the microphone. If you want to speak on any of the items that are on our agenda, so 591 Blue Hill Avenue, 106 Hillside Street, or Thayer Nursery, I ask that you wait until we get to those points on our agenda. Otherwise, please come forward and speak now.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dr. Donna Jones. I'm coming to talk to you about the Brushwood Estates' construction. I live in the property 207 Beacon Street that abuts the Brushwood Estates. I brought this in reference to new construction scheduled to commence at the Brushwood Estates. It's a gated community adjacent to my property at 207 Beacon Street. My property is separated by a fence from the estates where I've resided with my family for the past 18 years. In the past week, the builder and developer of the new construction at Brushwood was instructed to open a fence and replace it with a chain link fence in preparation to use the section as an access gate for construction vehicles to the Brushwood Estates. My understanding is this is based on an assumption that a dirt pathway between 220 Beacon Street and 207 Beacon Street is a continuation of the public road, Beacon Street. The public road ends at the foot of the driveway at 207 Beacon Street. In researching this information over a decade ago, my husband, a civil engineer, went to Town Hall to discuss a proposal to build a cottage on our property for my mother. We were told by the engineer at that time that Beacon Street ends at the driveway. There would not be enough frontage or access for emergency vehicles because there was not a continuation of the public road. In reviewing maps of the property, the road ends. Indeed, there is no continuation, and the area in question is a private passageway, not a public throughway. In other words, the builder is trespassing. This morning, at 8:15, I went out in front of my home, and there were three trucks there prepared to cut down trees to make room for the construction vehicles to come through. So there are two things that have been done without permission on private property, which is to put up a chain link fence and to have tree people come and start cutting down trees. The Brushwood Estates has two entrances and an area for access to the construction zone behind the tennis courts. They have two open entrances, one on Smith Road, one on Brush Hill Road, and in looking, there's a closed entrance on Brush Hill Road. So there's no logical reason that construction vehicles would need to be driven through a densely settled neighborhood and through private property to break a new entrance way. The trees they are proposing be sacrificed are on our property. There are children playing ball and walking home from school on Beacon Street with a sidewalk only on one side, so they are often in the street playing football, et cetera. It's not a place for construction vehicles. The original purchase of 207 Beacon Street was purposefully done to have a peaceful existence. Our Brushwood neighbors have made it clear they want their community to be exclusive and private. They're willing to sacrifice others for their convenience. The developer bought the land from Brushwood Estates at great cost. The money from the sale was used to improve the estates, and now they're rerouting the construction vehicles through the adjacent neighborhood because construction noise and traffic is inconvenient for them. The maps clearly show the road ends at the driveway at 207 Beacon Street. The street sweepers and the plows stop where the road stops on the map. I stand with the residents of the Beacon Street community and as the owner of the property against the continuation of any further advancement in attempting to utilize our neighborhood as a construction zone. In addition, we are firm in our stand that Brushwood Estates repair the fence, redirect the construction through their own property, and the entrance available to their private community. And it's signed Donna L. Jones, Owner, 207 Beacon Street, Milton, Massachusetts. So I thank you for your attention. There is one other item. If you would like, I will give it with a copy of the letter, and it talks about the definition of a paper street, and how that applies in the state of Massachusetts. It's not unprecedented that this has come up before in subdivisions, et cetera. And 220 Beacon Street and 207 Beacon Street, my house has the frontage that abuts the road that they're considering to be a private road, and there is a paper road that they're saying goes up, which is actually in my backyard. I'll send a copy of that around. 220 Beacon Street is directly across from me, and the two roads share this dirt passageway. A large part of that dirt road belongs to 220, a small part belongs to 207. If they are using a truck to go through that, they are trespassing on both of our properties. At 220 Beacon Street, and she will also talk, if she does get up to talk, about flooding that's happened in her property that is a direct result of what they're doing at Brushwood Estates. It also states in the Massachusetts law that if you have two abutters on this particular piece of land or pathway, that we have the right to refuse or fight any permits for them to use that pathway. So we directly own the pathway. If anybody would like to look at these other components of this, I will send that around, as well as a copy of the lever, because I have copies of my own. So I thank you again for your attention.
Thank you very much.
And I'll leave it open for others.
Thank you very much.[516.41][516.41](APPLAUSE). Can I just ask, how many people are here to speak on this issue? Okay? And how many are here who are interested but not necessarily speaking? Okay. Let me, before everybody else comes up to speak, I don't want to cut off, and I'm happy to have you come forward, but I want to just give you all some information so you know. And then I'll recognize Alex as well, and probably Bill, too, if he wants to just add something. The Planning Board has not yet issued our decision on this. So any work that is being done is being done without the authorization of the Planning Board, because we have not yet issued our decision. My understanding is that the town has not granted any access rights to this. They have not granted permission to cut any trees on town-owned property. And the building inspector, or the building commissioner, rather, has been down there. The Director of Planning, Bill Clark, is also taking a personal interest in this. But the Planning Board has not granted any authority. The site plan approval, when it's drafted, and we're not expecting to take the site plan approval up until our next meeting, but it will identify the specific trees to be cut. Those trees are only, the only trees that we would be authorizing are ones that are on Brushwood's own property. So just to let you all know that. Alex, do you have anything else you want to add before we let anyone else speak?
I was going to say that we are, this is on our agenda on October 5th.
That's right.
We're going to be, and
8th.
October 8th. And we're going to be discussing the site plan approval, and obviously, we're going to be discussing how the site is going to be accessed.
Yes.
And whether it's going to be accessed.
Where it will be accessed.
And where it will be accessed. And I think that, I think that the people who want to speak tonight might consider holding their fire until next time.
That you absolutely have the option to speak tonight. That's why we have Citizens Speak. But if you'd rather speak on October 8th, when not only will we be discussing the site plan approval, but the applicant will also be there, you're welcome to hold your comments tonight and come back on the 8th. So Bill, did you have something you wanted to add? And then I'll recognize other speakers at that point.
Building Commissioner and I had a discussion with the developer this afternoon. He is well aware that, you know, he was coming in the wrong way. He was told something by the condo association, and he since has been told how he really will be coming in. He understands that. He agrees with that. And I already told him that I would go to the site with him to figure out where everything is going to be going. We don't have the hammer. The building inspector does. This building inspector has no intention of letting any permit be issued until the site plan approval is released.
So having said that, does anybody else wish to speak tonight to this issue? So, yes ma'am, I saw your hand first, and then sir, I saw you after that. Yes, please come forward. And just again, your name and address into the mic. Oops. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Linda Meach. I live at 188 Beacon Street, where my parents bought in 1927, and I have lived there for 70 years. Seven zero. I would like assurances that even though the builder knows he's not supposed to do it, he won't do it, because this morning, he also knew, but he was there, or his trucks were there, to cut down the tree in spite of knowing that he shouldn't be doing it. So how can we know? Should we have a neighborhood vigilante team taking turns watching? What should we do? Really, I don't know what to do.
They're under a cease and desist by the building inspector.
They are. Is that a legal document? Please tell me. That will really, really stop them?
That's going to stop them. He's not going to build anything until the building inspector
Did you speak to him after this morning?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Please, please
No trees, no nothing.
And I would not suggest a vigilante group of any sort.[796.51][796.51](LAUGHING).
So I don't have to be looking for barrels and chains and locks, right?
No. But if anything else does happen, if you are concerned about anything, right now, the enforcement is with the building commissioner's office, so that would be the place to call.
Because, you know, I did call the police to ask them about it.
Yes.
And they said, well, it's not our deal. It's a civil deal.
Yes.
Go to the planning board.[820.61][820.61](LAUGHING).
Not us yet. It's actually the building commissioner. And again, you are more than welcome to come back on the
So our recourse, if we saw the trucks come up tomorrow morning, would be to call you folks.
No, the building inspector.
The building inspector.
We have no enforcement powers, especially because we haven't yet issued the site plan approval decision.
But the building inspector would help us out and would come down and stop them.
Yes.
Thank you very much. That's
You're welcome. Alex, you wanted to add something?
I'd like to add that if the builder, not having received site plan approval, goes in and having been told to cease and desist and does something, it's quite unlikely that the builder will ever get site plan approval.
So there is some recourse.
Mr. Clark is also someone who you can call.
(LAUGHING) Is that true, Bill? Are you seconding that, Bill? Or are you kind of (LAUGHING), thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Really, we all appreciate your help. That's a beautiful community we have here. We don't want to see it spoiled. And you wouldn't if you lived with us either. Thank you.[890.23][890.23](APPLAUSE).
Does anybody else wish to speak at Citizens Speak on this? I saw, yes, you first, and then you, ma'am. I saw you back there.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Wilkinson. I live at 1999 Beacon Street and was a town meeting member for 20 years until this spring. And you know me as a vigilante and rabble-rouser. But actually, I was one of the people on the street this morning when the trucks were there. And I just want to reemphasize, kind of our lasting concern about this and lack of faith in the official arrangement that you've just outlined. We're heartened by it. We appreciate it. But we hope that you will arrange extra vigilance, because a person operating as this developer did is frankly not to be trusted. So thank you very much for the action that you've taken, and we don't want to have to be out there on the street, literally, again, to have to stop that kind of thing. They already took down cedar fence and put up a chain link fence. We're not clear about how they had the authority to do that either, so we're not sure what they're prepared to do. Thank you.
Thank you.[975.69][975.69](APPLAUSE). Yes, please come forward.
Thank you. My name is Kelly Gallagher, and I live at 19 Beacon Street Circle. I don't have anything as planned as my neighbors and as detailed at all, but I just wanted to make sure that our, my neighbors who just spoke directly about this property, but we're very close, too. And there's many of us here tonight who, while we don't directly about the property, do believe we, our quality of life will be deeply impacted. And we're left with just the wonder of why this, and you've already addressed it, so I understand it, but just for the record, I support what my neighbors already spoke about. And the lingering question is, why aren't they doing it to the already previously opened areas they have? The gates on Brush Hill Road and Smith Road that we see open, shut, closed all the time. And, you know, they are our neighbors. Even though they've chose, chosen to have a gated community, they, their actions are affecting their neighbors. We're still neighbors whether there's a gate or there isn't a gate. So I just want to, you know, note that for the record.
Great.
Okay? So even though we're not right next to the property, we really, really feel our lives will be impacted. Okay?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1065.58][1065.58](APPLAUSE).
My name is Linda Parslow. I live at 220 Beacon Street. And on Monday afternoon, I personally spoke with Pat McKenna, the developer, who talked about his financial distress, and that this project was supposed to start in March. And he looked at the chain link fence and said, so can I ask you one more time, can we have access? And I said, absolutely not. Yet, the trucks, I was home today when all this occurred, but I was in the shower, and all the trucks pulled in, and they were all ready to take action.
Okay.
So he, I personally, face-to-face with the developer on Monday.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will pass all of this information back to the building commissioner as well. I mean, I'm sure he knows it.
Okay.
But we will reinforce that, that you did not give permission, and the concerns of the people who've spoken today. I think the point about extra vigilance is a good one, and we'll pass that back.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.[1128.65][1128.65](APPLAUSE).
I am at 84 Beacon Street Circle. I am the mother of a three-year-old and a six-year-old and a town meeting member. And I did get notification about the hearings for this project, and I understood that it was happening within the community, of the gated community. I'm concerned that I did not realize that they were going to be accessing the community over private property next to my house, where I have young children, and I'm a little bit worried about the safety. I'm glad to hear that there's going to be a site plan approval. I just wanted to clarify, because I heard two dates, the 5th and the 8th.
It's the 8th.
The 8th, okay. And the developer will be here on that night?
I would assume so, yes.
So if you want to speak any further to that, that would be the day to do it?
What? Yes, I'm getting to that.
Okay.
Sorry. He was reminding me to remind you to give your name for the record.
Emily Speck. Thank you.
So, yes. And again, I would encourage all of you to come back on the 8th, so that he can hear your comments. We've noted on the board that pictures are quite often useful as well, should you have any further incidents, which we devoutly hope that you don't, but if you do, pictures are useful.
And any communication with the developer should also remind him to communicate with other contractors and other outside organizations, because I think the trucks that were there today, which were the ones that I went out and spoke to, were not, they were an outside organization that had been hired to do a separate job, and they had been not given clear instructions about what they should do.
Okay.
And so he may be like, oh, I'm going to stop, but then if he's hired somebody else who's showing up, someone needs to remind him that nobody can come through that way, not just himself or his trucks.
That's a good point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.[1243.58][1243.58](APPLAUSE). Come forward.
Hi. I'm Tom Denley from 16 Beacon Street Circle. This area is right around the corner from us. I'd like to say you have a planning board, you have a clerk who's working for you. I would love to ask you to please direct a letter from the planning board, say to the developer, put the fence back, put everything the way you left it.
Yeah!
And please, you can't do anything until you have been approved of. I would like to see that come from you, so he knows that he's on call. Not that he has gotten a telephone call. I would love to see this go registered mail, so you could absolutely track it, make sure this man doesn't go too far. You understand, he knew that he had no access. The owner of 220 Beacon had said to him, no, you can't. He decided he could. I think you have to take the bull by the horns and say, hey, stop.
Yeah!
Thank you very much.
Yeah, baby![1326.23][1326.23](APPLAUSE).
Yes, sir.
Hi.
Welcome.
Welcome. My name is Noah James, and I live at 206 Beacon Street. I'm making a passionate speech for the children. We don't have sidewalks in all the areas where we live. The community, the streets, is part of how we socialize. This is about the children with me. You know, a lot of good points been made, but when I look out my window and I see the kids sledding, rollerblading, when I see people walking, animals, it's a walking community. Children socialize on the streets, you know? We know where they are, people all the time, walking through our community. Send trucks through our community, we'll destroy it. It really would. And I came here 16 years ago with open arms, and my arms are open to my friends back here. But one thing I don't want to see happen is that the children that we have there, the adults that we have walking, the dogs, the community destroyed by trucks, you know? A lot of good points been made. I won't reiterate that, but it's important that our community remains whole for the children to the future. Just what we're doing this for.[1408.13][1408.13](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much. Anyone else? So if not, thank you all for coming. We, oh, I'm sorry, sir, I didn't see your hand.
Yeah, not for the Brush Hill, I don't have any more.
Oh, let me finish off with the Brush Hill. Yes.
May I ask a question? You didn't answer me.
No, I will have to take that up with
Send a letter or not?
I'll take that up with the other members of the board later on in our agenda, so that we don't normally do
Do you have a say to wait for this?
I had, the board members should have a say on the letter, yes. I don't, I try not to be dictatorial.[1444.23][1444.23](LAUGHING). So, but we don't normally do board discussion during Citizens Speak because of the other items on our agenda. So I promise, I've made a note to bring it up with the board at the end of our meeting. So that is the best I can do at the moment. But I have not forgotten. I will make sure.
Will you follow the people at 220 and 209 Beacon Streets? Tell them what you agreed to?
I will ask the planning staff to inform people. Do we have your contact information, ma'am? Did you put that on the letter?
I can't leave it there. I just have the address, but I didn't leave it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We will follow up on that. Thank you. So, so let me finish off with this, sir, and then I'll recognize you for Citizens Speak. So again, thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate them. We will be taking up this matter at our next meeting on October 8th. I urge you all, if you want to make further comments or hear the board's discussion, to please come to that meeting. So, but we do appreciate your input tonight, and we will follow up on it and make sure that, to the best of our ability as a board, that we can track what's happening and work with the building inspector to make sure that the unauthorized actions are not continuing. So thank you for letting us know. Sir, you wish to speak on another matter?
My name is Patrick Greeley. I live at 149 Bradley Road. I've been a resident for 53 years. My family's been there over 60. I just have two issues I have. The St. Pius X property, I actually had a conversation with Mr. Clark on the phone the other day, and we were talking about, I haven't had a chance to speak, I tried to last time, but I had to go to work, that the truck now traffic that's going to be going to that job.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we are still in the midst of a three-year job on the other end of Brush Hill Road, of Fairmount Ave, that we were told that the trucks would be split between Bradley Road, Robin Street, Vocil Road, which never happened. Everything that went up to that job site came down Bradley Road.
Mm-hmm.
Every single one. Now, Mr. Clark is saying that this job now, that's at St. Pius X, that the truck traffic will be split between Bradley Road again and Milton Street. Now, if the trucks are coming off of 128, you'd get onto Ponson Valley Parkway, you'd fall onto Ponson Valley Parkway to the bottom of Brush Hill Road, and get onto Brush Hill Road that way. I mean, no offense to the people on Brush Hill Road, but we've already gone through now three years of this other traffic, constant traffic. It is a no-truck street, Bradley Road and Milton Street, and we have constant cut-through traffic of trucks, 25 per day, that don't get stopped, even though there's four signs, two on each end of the street, and they still cut through constantly. The road's probably one of the dangerous roads in the town. Seventy percent of that road has 25-foot drop-offs on each side. So now, you come down that street, and you have a 10-wheeler coming down with 45,000 pounds. Some of the concrete trucks are going to 75,000 pounds. That street's not made for that, especially that area. I mean, one of these days, someone's going to come down the street, and it's not going to be there. It already has washed out a few times over the years.
Mm-hmm.
At least two or three times. So what the people of Bradley Road are asking is to keep the truck traffic of that construction job off the street. Now, today, we had dueling trucks going down. We had the trucks still going up to the other job that's not finished yet, and now we have the St. Pius job coming in the same way. So they, actually, two of the trucks today actually had to pull mirrors in to get by each other on the street. Now, the people do walk on the street, God love them for doing it, because it's crazy to do it, because it's, they're going 65 miles an hour, some of the college kids on that street. Easy. And the second comment I have is, I understand, I know the zoning articles have been sort of kiboshed.
Mm-hmm.
But the, two of the articles that were brought in to, to the planning board were from a citizens petition that my area put in. And we put in because of the light system at the college that was put up between, without anyone, anybody's notice. There was no plans, there was no permits pulled, there was no height restrictions looked at, as 83-foot poles went up 100 yards off of people's property lines. In comparison to the, to the light systems at Milton High School, which has 40 lights, Curry College has 132 lights.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And lights up the same 100 yards as Milton High School plays on. But Milton High School actually has a track, a pit, shot put area, all, still lit up by those 40 lights. If you take all those lights that are in the parking lot and the lower fields at the high school, still doesn't come up the amount that Curry has to light up their 100 yards. And what really upset us as a community that abuts that is when it got to, when it came to putting in these articles, the lighting article, and also the, I don't know what you guys were calling it now, the music or
Amplified music.
Amplified music.
Yep.
Before the poles went up in 2004, the neighborhood saw the first stanchion go in the ground. So the, automatically, we went up. Now, this is a dog for another fight here, unfortunately, for another board, so I'm not going to get into it too much. But what, we started arguing in 2004 because of what was happening to us. And the town turned a blind eye, and has to this day, until we finally brought it up to citizens, to a citizens petition that went through a unanimous decision at the Waring Committee, and then the town meeting, to a unanimous decision at town meeting, to have something done to help our properties. And the first articles that come out, now that I'm hearing is, you're trying to say that they're grandfathered in. There's nothing Curry College ever stepped foot on that property. So the grandfather, for anybody to sit here and tell me that anything is grandfathered in because the town has turned a blind eye to it for 10 solid years, and not done one thing, not one change has been made, it's a joke. It's really a joke. And it sort of gets under our skin a tad, you know? When you've been living there that long, you should have rights to be able to go out in your backyard without, I have tapes, I have, we have gone to 15 different colleges, above Curry's division, and even high schools, and even in their own division, no one even comes close to this lighting system. It's absurd. It's ridiculous, because they don't want to just light up the 100 yards, they want to light up the other areas that are, next to the, you have people practicing at 10:00 at night, seven feet off of a property line, 20 feet from somebody's house, you have 50 kids yelling and screaming at 10:00 at night. It's absurd, it's ridiculous. I mean, we're paying taxes for what? They run the, they run the show up there, there's no question about it. So the next time these articles come up, there was nothing about any kind of timing on how long they could have them on, how, you know, they're on seven nights a week. Even when they're not on the field, the lights are on. You call them and say, you know, jeez, you know, we're already, my whole back of my house, four rooms of my house are lit up. You don't even have, my neighbors is even worse, some people on Athan Street are even worse. I have, I think I showed you, and you came up-
You did, yes you did.
On my phone. I'm standing inside my house, and you can hear that music like it's outside your door. So you sit here right now, and there's 50 kids a door over from you screaming bloody murder at 10:00 at night. Now, there's young kids in that area that we have to put up with this. So these articles need to be written, but they need to be written because of this college, because there's no other entity in this town that's as abusive as this is right now. So I want to make sure that it's on the record that, you know, grandfather clause doesn't even come close, especially now when I see there's a pole being moved in East Milton Square that was there for, since 1950, the permits were, now it rescinded, you know, because of no grandfather clause for the gas station, right? For the pole that was in there now, right? 1950 that pole went in. But now, all of a sudden, it's not grandfathered in, it's rescinded, and now the guy's gotta start from scratch. Sounds a little fishy to me.
So, I want to thank you for bringing the zoning forward, because although those zoning articles did not go forward for October, later on at our meeting tonight, we'll be discussing what goes forward for May, so it was very timely.
Okay.
On the truck traffic, that was the first I've heard of it, so I'm going to talk to Bill after the meeting-
Okay.
And find out what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, it's just not fair, I mean, it's ridiculous.
Appreciate you bringing that in.
It's outrageous, I mean, you're talking about over 100 trucks a day. I mean, I mean, a week, excuse me, a week, that are going up and down, so it's crazy.
So thank you very much for bringing that forward.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Anybody else for Citizen Speak? All right, in that case, we are going to move to, now, we were going to move to the public hearing at 7:15, and we have gone past 7:15, but for important reasons. And you, to the people who are here for the Thayer, we have two items that we're going to take before you, because we were expecting to have a long conversation.
I'm willing to wait.
You're willing to wait? Okay. And the A and R for 106 Hillside? Do we have an idea, Bill and Tim, how long that's likely to take? Is it a five minute, or is it a half hour?
Five minutes.
Are you all willing to wait five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as it's worth it.
Okay. All right, then let's do, let's do 106 Hillside, and if Paul's willing to wait, we'll take up the 591 after we're done with Thayer. So please, come forward. Introduce yourselves to the record.
Hi, my name is Katrin Van Wiet, and I live at 106 Hillside Street.
Welcome.
I'm Peter Tuttle from Grady Consulting, 71 Evergreen Street, Kingston.
So, Bill, if you want to-
Their plan is to take a 60-by, approximately 158-foot lot, it's a 9,394 square-foot lot. They're buying X amount of land from Henry Thomas, combining it with their, their own lot at 106 Hillside. Just duplicate something that same property owners did in 2005, when they bought 50-foot lot in Carson. They're just extending the yard by 9,394, it's 10 feet.
And it looks pretty good.
Yeah.
Other than the fact, what is that road on it, Phil? They show something called Brook Avenue, which is called private variable width, and Brook Avenue is simply a paper street.
Okay.
So we're going to add a comment.
Number eight?
Probably under Brook Avenue.
Okay.
Saying Brook Avenue is a paper street and does not provide frontage.
Okay. Want me to add that?
Add that to right under where, and take out a private variable width. You could say private, but it isn't a variable width, it is no width.
Okay.
It's just a paper street.
I'm missing it.
And so-
So at the bottom, the bottom where it says Brook Avenue, that's, that's a paper street. Okay.
You want me to write it right on the Mylar?
I'm not sure the district should take it if you write it on.
They should.
Or you can bring it in to Mr. Clark.
Yeah, we can authorize.
Why don't you bring it in to Mr. Clark tomorrow, and he will endorse it. I make a motion there.
Well, before you make a motion, I'm making sure nobody else has any questions. Mike, you're good? Cheryl?
So we're just adding Lot 8, is that what we're doing?
We're, we're, we're taking Lot 8 from Lot 9?
Yes.
And then adding it to 106.
Adding it to 106, right.
Thank you.
I move that we authorize Mr. Clark to endorse this plan as not requiring subdivision approval.
Have a second?
Second.
With the, with the additional notation.
Second. Cheryl, thank you. Any other questions?
Do you want it, private, not constructed, or do you want it paper street?
You could say private, not constructed. And then say this, this, this street does not provide frontage.
Call those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is special permit and site plan approval. This is for Thayer Nursery, and is continued from September 10th. And if you all remember, we continued it, the board continued it from September 10th for the purpose, for two purposes. One was to allow the applicant to respond to a report from Kavanaugh Tochi Associates that had been provided by one of the abutters, or a set of the abutters. And the second person was to allow those same abutters to provide the board with a report from Eaglebrook, and then allow the response from the applicant. So the only subjects that will be discussed during the public hearing will be the noise, which is the Kavanaugh Tochi associate report, and the applicant's response, and the drainage, which is the Eaglebrook report and the applicant's response. Because the board had voted to keep the public hearing solely for, open solely for those items, those two are the only items that will be discussed tonight during the public hearing. Now, our normal process is that we get a report from staff on the outstanding items and new information received. I've just given that on the staff's behalf. We'll get an update from the applicant on these outstanding items. They'll take questions from the board members, and then we'll take testimony from members of the public, and move from there. I am expecting, based on the board's vote, that we would be closing the public hearing tonight, and then the board will be moving to discussing, beginning our deliberations and discussing that draft order of conditions that we handed out last time. I would expect that the likelihood is that we would continue our discussion of the draft order of conditions to October 8th, because it's quite large, I don't expect that we'll get through it all tonight, and then discuss that, and further items, depending on what the board decides. But again, tonight, we are only discussing in the public hearing drainage and noise, and that's it. Mr. Corcoran, do you have anything on drainage and noise for your client tonight?
Yeah, now, yes, thank you, and I'd ask Jim Burke to join me. For the record, I'm Corcoran, counsel to Thayer. Maggie and Josh Oldfield at Thayer Nursery. I'm joined by Jim Burke. I know that Mr. Burke prepared a response to the drainage work that was done by Mr. Rowan Johanning's drainage expert, and has modified some plans. Accordingly, I think that material was submitted to the board.
It was, and I have given permission to their drainage expert to be able to, Mr. Giuliano, to present his information. You may want to respond to him rather than speaking now, so that it moves-
Yeah, that works for me.
And that would be during the public hearing portion, or the public comment portion of that, they, he would be able to speak, and then you would be able to make your response at that time, or you can present now, but it might be better.
However, however you'd like to handle that.
I think that might be the, the better way of doing it. I don't know if you want to go ahead and respond to the noise at this point.
With respect to the noise, we have a brief memo that we forwarded to Bill.
Okay.
Came in this week from Josh and Maggie's technical consultant, Acentec, who had issued a previous report, simply in their opinion, is suggesting that the noise barriers that are proposed will result in lower overall sound levels to properties around it, and I think it's pretty straightforward. It doesn't get into a whole lot of technical response to different issues, it's just, new fence with sound attenuation is gonna work, it's gonna dramatically reduce the volume of noise.
Excellent. Board members, any questions? You've had a chance to read all of the reports. As I've said, Mr. Giuliano from Eaglebrook, during the public comment portion, will be allowed to make a presentation of his findings. You've had the Kavanaugh Tochi and the responses in your packets. Any questions at this point?
At this point.
Okay. All right, well, in that case, I'm going to open it up for the public comment portion. I'll read the regular rules. You'll, you guys will want to sit back for a little bit. So the reminder for the public testimony, wait to be recognized before speaking, come to the table and give your name and address, speak into the microphone. When you are done, please leave the table. All questions or comments must be directed to the chair. Speakers may not cross-examine applicant, board members, or other speakers. Applicant will be asked to respond to questions at the end of the public input session. In this case, because the hearing is for drainage, I'm going to have Mr. Giuliano speak first, and allow the applicant to respond, and then that gives members of the public the chance to respond to both sides on the drainage. So is Mr. Giuliano here? Yep, there you are. Please come forward, and of course, introduce yourself to the record.
Your fellow record, Michael Giuliano with Eaglebrook Engineering from Dan versus Mass. I did receive the revised set of plans on September 21st, so a lot of the issues in my initial letter were addressed. There's just a couple of other issues I would like to discuss with the board in regard to the revised plan.
Okay.
On Sheet 1, on the stone swale, that's the sail, the swale that runs parallel to the, so the southerly property line, and we saw that during the site visit. They show that to be abandoned, and the concern is, is that it's still, abandoned to me means this is gonna remain in place, and the concern is, that whole area is glacial tilt very tight, and it's filled with stone, 40% voids. It's a conduit for water to flow, surface water and groundwater to flow towards the back, and I like to have it removed as opposed to abandoned. And this, this way, water isn't allowed to freely flow to the back of the Tevens property, and then towards the Johanning Row property. All right. And then, the other comment in regard to the berm, which is actually shown on Sheet 2, is to the, kind of the south, excuse me, the northeast and the southwest, where the, actually, this is Sheet 2 right here.
I was gonna say, if you go, take the mic with you.
Just to, to ensure that there's not going to be flow onto the Johanning Row property, is over here and over here, is just either with grading or no, just ensure that the berm's gonna encompass the whole length of that property line, because there's kind of, an area here where water could potentially still flow, and there's no notice fire. It looks like the berm stops here with the grading, and I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen. The other thing, too, is, I'd like to have spot grades to ensure that water's gonna flow towards the pond as opposed to pond here, so I don't want any water ponding in the back of the Road Johanning property. All right. Other than that, the other issues that I brought up were addressed, other than, I think I brought up a total suspended solid issue, that's more of a town issue as opposed to a Johanning Row issue, and that's regard to the pond and how it connects to the storm drainage system. And then, I also commented on the control structure for the hydrocath model that they designed, that's still not modeled properly, so what they're showing for peak flows, you know, isn't, isn't correct at this point. Other issues that I brought up were addressed in the revised set of plans and calculations.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Where did you go? Oh, there you are. For some reason, I was looking back there. Come on up, and, and you have your chance to respond.
It'll actually be a fairly quick response. You know, our intent, as talked about in our site walk, was to keep all our water onsite and conveyed down to the front, to that detention base. If I have to add, you know, a couple of, extend some contours and add some spot grades to make it a little more clear for construction, that's certainly not a problem. As far as abandoning the stone swale, you know, we've been watching that stone swale, I don't think it's actually wicking any water whatsoever, but there's certainly, you know, several ways to abandon it, you know, you can excavate up, you know, a section of it and throw in some fairly dense material, clay dam of some sort, but we can certainly come up with a method for that, to make sure that it's adequate and not conveying any sort of water. And as far as the outlet, you know, I'll have to talk to the peer review engineer directly about it, because I found, what I thought was the error, and I don't want to get, you know, too involved in the aspects of it, but, you know, I modeled it as a vertical orifice of 24-inch, and it's actually a horizontal one, so I toggled it for horizontal. I changed the numbers a little bit, not too much, but specifically, I'd have to talk to them to find out, because I think it's modeled correctly. So, I stand by it, that's all I can say.
All right, Diana. Okay, so having had your chances to both address, I'm going to ask you guys to sit back, and then I'll open it up to the public, for public comment. Does anybody wish to speak? Yes, Mr. Johanning.
I'm Phil Johanning, 23 Parkwood Drive in Milton. I guess, I, I didn't get a copy of the letter that was referred to about, from Acentec. Would I be, that's part of the public record, I can request that?
Yes, it's part of the public record. You can request it, absolutely.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I guess I, I think that there was a lot of technical information in the report that Kavanaugh Tochi did, Kavanaugh Tochi did, and I, I think that this really doesn't address that. One of the important measurements is the, is the sound baseline, and I don't know whether Acentec agrees or disagrees with our experts' determination of the, of the sound baseline. And the other thing is that the, the CMR requires that the noise, that when the, the Thayer Nursery is in operation, the noise at the property line cannot be more than 10 decibels above the baseline. And that is something else that Kavanaugh Tochi explained, and it's in 310 CMR 7.10. And so, it's, it's really important to, I mean, this, this doesn't even get at any of those determinations, it doesn't even get at the CMR, it doesn't, so I, I mean, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that this says anything, but I do wonder, is this, do we agree with the baseline, or do we not agree with the baseline? If I get a machine to measure and track the noise at my property line, and it goes above 10 decibels, could that be a problem? And they're, they're just saying the fence will help, but that should be proven, not, not just stated. I mean, how, how is this proven that the fence is helping? Like, at Pam's property line, you know, there's a landcare yard right on the other side, and the guy from Kavanaugh Tochi said, that Acentec's own report said that a bobcat operating drive- drives the noise above that 10 decibel level. And so, and they put, they put their bobcats in specific locations, but in fact, the bobcats travel all around the property. And additionally, there can be multiple machines operating at the same time. So looking at one doesn't really do the job. But even if you just look at one at a staged location, it, Kavanaugh Tochi's report shows that it, it goes above 10 decibels. So if, if you're going to say that, that the fence is going to mitigate that, that seems to me to be something that could be proven or disproven. And I don't think anybody did that. So if I buy a machine and I start tracking the noise levels and they go above 10 decibels over the baseline, it seems to me that's a violation of the CMR. And so, you know, I, I wonder, then I call the, the building inspector and I show him my printout. You know, this is going to happen because these fences won't work. Kevin Otto Chi told me they're not going to work. And if you read Acentec's report, it, it really depends on the, whether the, the noise is low or high, the extent to which the fence is going to actually be effective. And one of the things that Kevin Otto Chi mentioned to me was that noise travels by sightline. So he said, you know, if you go upstairs in your house, you can see Thayer Nursery. If you can see Thayer Nursery, you can hear Thayer Nursery. So you'd have to have an incredibly tall fence to block the sightline. So I guess I really think that the, the issue of noise really has not been adequately addressed. It really hasn't. We've talked a lot about fences, but it doesn't mean that the fence is actually going to mean that, you know, you're going to get the mitigation that you would need to get to be compliant with 310 CMR 7.10. So I, I think this just is, is a big problem that has not been resolved.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Anybody else wish to speak? It's your last chance. It's the public hearing. All right. In that case, since nobody else is wanting to speak, Ned, do you wish to respond to any of the comments? Once you're done, I'm going to throw it open to the board for any questions they may have. And then we'll have a discussion of whether or not they're prepared to close the public hearing at this point.
No, I think the, the evidence that's presented with respect to noise is adequate. There was an earlier report submitted with the initial plan that addressed the diminution of noise levels based on the, this type of sound attenuating material. That has not been refuted. I guess the question will be at some point, what is the baseline noise? Because the baseline noise, I suppose, is the operation of equipment for nursery purposes. And if there's an increase in that noise level for landscape business, then that increase can only be to a certain degree. But I think the, the evidence is adequate that the fencing will significantly reduce the amount of noise emanating from the property and provide adequate protection. And so, given that, I would ask the board to close the public hearing.
Board members, do you have any questions on what was presented tonight? Yes, Alex.
Well, the engineer said there was something wrong with the structure.
Which?
And then Mr. Burke said, no, as far as I know, there's nothing wrong with the structure. And I'd be interested to know what's wrong with the structure because, you know, if we should, if it should be changed, it should be changed. So maybe we could get a little more information on.
From both Mr. Giuliano and Mr. Burke?
That would be, that particular issue, just so we can either put it to rest or, or put it to rest.
Anybody else have any particular questions for the two engineers? And we can ask them all at once? If not, Mr. Giuliano and Mr. Burke, would you both come up? And then maybe, Mr. Giuliano, Giuliano, you can explain what you think is incorrect. And Mr. Burke, you can respond. Hopefully, we will understand the technical.
So I understand you're talking about the modeling of the outlet structure? Is that what you're referring to? Yeah, okay. Actually, that's on Sheet 3. Which is the, you can tell on the top left-hand corner. Basically, three inlets, and then what he's using is a HydroCAD model. And so the bottom pipe is actually a primary, and then all the, the other two devices actually flow into it. And then if you look at his HydroCAD calculations, it's, has them all as primary, so it's not modeled properly in the HydroCAD model. So the outlet structure has to be revised to reflect what actually, how water actually flows into the bottom pipe.
So you're not necessarily saying that there's anything wrong with the structure? You're saying the numbers you used to calculate?
What I'm saying is, there's nothing wrong with the structure, but how you model, what the results are, are incorrect based on how it's detailed on the plan.
All right. But I wouldn't necessarily change the structure. I would add another, I would add a reach because that outlet leading out of the structure is going to be modeled as a culvert. And so you'd have to put another. You'd have to put a reach in, into the catch basin, which we can do. That's not a problem.
So you're saying that you can address his overall concerns?
I don't think anything has to be changed. I think it has to be modeled properly so we know what we're looking at. So I don't think anything has to be changed on the, on the structure itself, but how it's modeled has to be changed, excuse me, how its model has to be changed.
Will a difference in the modeling, if, if nothing has to be changed on the structure, in your opinion, does that mean it matters whether or not the model?
Right.
You see what I mean? Is, is you're saying the model is, modeling is wrong, but the, the outcome is that he doesn't have to change the structure?
Right. So all these calculations, the results of the calculations, the peak flows, are going to change.
But does that, but you're not saying that has an effect on what he needs to do? Because you just said the structure was okay.
What you're saying is that that 12-inch pipe that's coming out of the bottom of that structure?
Yeah.
Is the constriction. So that possibly constrict and back up and actually cause additional flooding into the pond.
So what's the remedy for that?
Model that particular culvert. And if it does back it up, increase the size of it.
Okay.
Increase the size, the diameter of the structure itself?
Yes, of the, of the culvert. Or perhaps, I mean, if, you know, maybe you want to use that 12-inch culvert, I'd have to talk to DPW. Maybe they want just a 12-inch pipe coming into the street. So then you'd have to, to make sure that that culvert is not surcharged. And maybe that will provide enough control. I'll have to wait and see what the model does. But it's, you know, I agree, I agree with Michael. You know, it's, you know.
So you're going to remodel it?
Right.
And so if you remodel it, then that is something where you can come back and say, either the model said the structure's fine, or the model says the structure needs to be changed, and this is how I'd change the structure.
Exactly.
And we're done. Okay.
You know, the thing is, you know, the numbers are so radically reduced. I mean, we're dropping the flows considerably in every storm. So I have some leeway with regards to how to control the stormwater.
I'd say the likelihood is we're not going to be finished with looking at the conditions tonight. So there's time for him to come back.
I think that you look at your modeling and, and you're suggesting that the structure probably won't have to be changed, but it may.
And if it does, you'll let us know.
No, I get what you're saying. You know, I'm, I think that the, the orifice is going to be the controlling feature of the structure and not the culvert.
Right. Well, get those, get those results in. Get that modeling in.
Any other questions from board members? Thank you both very much for coming up to discuss that. Any other questions from board members? All right. In that case, do I have board members a motion of any sort? Yes, night. All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on closing the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Okay. And one extension? All right. So ladies and gentlemen, we can close the public hearing. Let me remind you what that means. It means that the board has moved into its deliberative process on the conditions that might be attached, that would be attached to the special permit. If the board at the end of its deliberative process determines that we just to grant a special permit. What that means is that there's no further comment from the public or from the applicant unless the board specifically asks the question of me that I feel best can be met by asking someone else. So what we have just had in front of us is the, we're calling the draft order of conditions because it has to be named something. But effectively, what it is, is Tim and myself pulling out from the application and the material that we have received throughout this public hearing process, those conditions that the board will want to look at and decide how it wants to, how it would want to impose, and what it would want to impose on the applicant as a condition of granting approval. So the first section is required plans and documents that came from the zoning. And just, this is just the information that would be on the final plans that are submitted. And obviously, what we would do if, if we granted a special permit was refer specifically to those plans. You can see notes in the, the column. So we've got the required plan, the required information that should be on it, the existing sheet note, sheet number from the application, and then note that they have to be, may have to be resubmitted depending on our, our conditions. You know, Tim, we forgot page numbers on these. But if you go to four, which is one, two, three, four pages in, you'll see conditions of approval. And again, these are draft. Starts off with the definition of the landscaping business and the additional authorized activities. And these are all pulled from the zoning and in the cases of quantities that you see from the application. We then move on to activities that are not authorized by the special permit and site plan approval because obviously, there are some, there are things that the, that are happening on the site, such as the nursery business, that this, our decisions would not authorize. This includes, the next section's the allowed hours of operation. We then move into the vehicles and the conditions of operation on the vehicles, storage of materials, deliveries, including delivery operations, parking, lighting, dumpsters, landscaping and fencing, drainage. And I think we end with, effectively end with drainage. So these are the categories of the things that we need to discuss. We can either take them in order, or if you want to take a specific one, certainly drainage and noise have been two issues that we've heard a lot about. Noise in particular is dealt with. You'll have heard, there's not a separate section on noise. That's because it's covered in both vehicle operations and delivery operations because it's affected, noise is created by both of those, and that's where it should be affected. It is also, of course, dealt with in the landscaping and fencing as far as the mitigation of noise. So I am open to thoughts by board members as about how they would like to approach this. As I said, this is just really a guide for, for our discussions. It is not meant to be anything final in any way, shape. It's just pulling the information together so we have something to, to work with, basically. So thoughts? Questions? If none, I suggest that we start, not with required plans and documents, but start at the beginning with, of conditions of approval, with definition of landscaping business.
Agreed.
Fair enough. All right. So the, the draft text.
I've numbered these pages, one to 13.
Oh, good job.
And I think it would be useful if everyone did the same so that we can.
More easily refer to them.
Know what page that we're talking about.
Good idea. So again, we have this on our agenda. We have the discussion of the zoning articles, and we have that presentation. I would suggest we spend an hour on this and then sort of see where we are at the end of the hour, which would take us to about 10 past 9:00. And then sort of check in and just see how far we've gotten and what we'd like to, what further we might like to accomplish, or if there are things that we need to go and think about prior to our next meeting on the 8th. As I said, I think this will take longer than one night to do. So definition of the landscaping business under conditions of approval starts on page four. The text at the moment, it's A, definition of landscaping business. The landscape business may undertake the following activities as authorized under subsection two, definition of landscaping business permissible activities. The items in italics refer to the original zoning. I is construct, install, and maintain lawns, trees, yards, shrubs, gardens, patios, related grounds, and other outdoor areas which are not owned by the applicants. Two is own or lease real and personal property. And three is employ employees. And then you'll see a table underneath there. That table identifies the business and the 2012 number of employees from the application. Landscaping Nursery is Josh Oldfield, and Nursery Landscaping is Maggie Oldfield. In addition, the employees were not named, obviously, because they can change. But what we've done is we've put the number down. So landscaping slash nursery is four employees, and there are six employees that are specifically to the nursery, and seven employees that are specific to landscaping. Does anybody have any comments on this section? I mean, we're not going to vote it section by section. What I'm going to do is identify where there are issues that we need to have discussions. So if there's something we don't need a discussion on, yes, Alex.
We have a definition of landscaping business in section two of the zoning.
This should be from section two of the zoning, but it's worth checking to make sure that it was properly pulled.